Welcome, everybody. To our Council on Health Board of Selectmen Tuesday, May 5th, 2020 meeting. For the LEPC update. And I'd like to start with community input. Is there anybody that would like to give some community input? It's always, I don't know, it doesn't look like anybody's on telephone. If you want to be recognized, if you know how to raise your hand. You go to participants, you find your name and. Or rather, there's at the bottom of the participants list, there's a little button that says raise hand. You can raise your hand to be. Recognized. Okay, seeing none, I'd like to get started with the LEPC update, Public Information Session about the coronavirus. And I don't see Chief Fisher, so I would like, and I don't see, do I see Linda?
Right here.
She's there.
Okay, I don't see her, that's all.
Fisher's there.
Oh, there he is. Okay, sorry. Chief Fisher, let's start with you. We'll always start with you.
What's the bowling ball wearing glasses? So I think, you know, I think I'll, tonight, because we're doing the reports, I thought I'd separate out kind of LEPC, short, medium, long-term goals. And I know that's what we're talking about tonight as opposed to the police department's short, medium, long-term. Is that okay if I go that way, Kate?
Sure, absolutely.
Well, I think some of the things, as you know, that we've talked about. From an LEPC standpoint is without. Without, I think it's tough to pat yourself in the back when we still have cases in Carlisle. It's very, very unfortunate. We still have people suffering. But when you compare to other cities and towns our size, I think that, you know, most of the people in LEPC have done a good job of saying, hey, you know, we're doing okay here as a town. But so I think I would segue right into that with our short-term goals. I think the things that were mentioned during LEPC meetings in the last week were that we need to keep up that good work, that we need to encourage people in Carlisle to stay with the safe distancing, to keep our young people wearing masks, to keep folks engaged. And it's, it's that work, as big of a drag as it is, it's kept us to where at the levels we are. And that, I think that mostly LEPC members weighed in and thought that all bits and pieces of that were really important. And maybe the last quick reminder of our residents that they are in love for reason. I think our medium-term goals, some of the things that have come up in LEPC, the LEPC wants to really partner with some of our town functions. So the LEPC has been involved with, you know, ensuring that the caucus can go off safely. So I think we have a good plan. We helped do the plan for that with our folks. And that we look forward to helping with planning our election, the potential, at least for a town meeting, that we're going to be right there trying to, you know, advocate for a safe town meeting if it can be pulled off. So I think those are kind of some of the medium-term things that we've talked about, as well as, I'm sure that, you know, Tim's going to go into this, but, you know, we're partnering with Tim and then and folks that work at Town Hall to keep Carlisle's functions going and enhance them and make them, make them better and safer. And I think some of the long-term goals that have come up in the, in the last week is, you know, and I hate to use it, but it's a term that's thrown out, and it probably is what it is, is what's our new normal going to be? Like, does everybody have in town, does everybody have that works for our town and volunteers in our town have what they need to proceed safely? For what seems like is a long haul. And I think the LEPC is committed to our town in that fashion. And there's some other members here, Kate, that might remember something else other than than what I wrote down. So wearing the LEPC hat, that's, that's what I thought. Do you mind if I open it up to others that might have had some of the short, medium, and long-term things I missed?
That's fine. Go ahead.
Is there anybody else out there, anything I didn't note in our meeting in the last week and a half or so?
I think you've covered it.
All right, Nifty, do you want me to kick right over to Police Department? Or do you want to just keep working around and I can go later?
I'll go. Let's walk around, because I think I'd like to hear from Board of Health first, because there's some new news on that. And then we can go back to the, what you call the elevator speeches. So Linda? I still don't see her, actually.
She's here, Kate. She's not here yet.
Oh, she's not here yet. Sorry. Okay, she isn't there.
On the call.
Okay, well, then, Chief Soros?
Sure. So, oh, yeah, I'm on mute. Good. So. We have several operational components in the fire department. We have fire prevention, which is kind of more like code enforcement, like the building department. We have, then we have fire and EMS. And, and those have their components. But for us, something that's been very much a focus, and we need to continue with, is recruitment, retention, and training of new members. We've been on, really working hard to have a sustainable on-call model. And, and that's a focus. And that will all be affected by the pandemic and the continuation of COVID. So. We were fortunate to have the warning that the pandemic pandemic was coming. So we worked to be prepared. So currently, the kinds of things we've, we've prepared and we have going for us. Part of it is with EMS, we've been aggressively moving forward, training 12 new EMTs. We've outfitted our second ambulance to make it bring it to Carlisle standards. So we have a backup ambulance. We needed this not just for capacity, you know, we were concerned about capacity. We have a lot of elderly residents. We didn't know how COVID would hit us. But also just for the ability to take it, an ambulance out of service for an extended period of time to for full decontamination. So we were able to do that partially with equipment donated from other departments. We have been working and obtaining sufficient PPE and disinfecting supplies for what we need right now. We've, a lot of things we've done to move training. We have to continue our training, but to move it either to teleconference, we've, we've found some third-party training that's been helpful. Although, really, a lot of what we need to do does require some, some hands-on, and we're working on how to do that. We have had some sporadic hands-on trainings in small groups, including pumping of cisterns and, and things like that. Our fire district was very concerned about. What would happen to staffing? They don't have quite the, most of the departments don't have the dynamic staffing we do. So we worked with them on a continuing operation plan that they have implemented. So that if staffing levels anywhere in the district are a problem, the rest of the district can fill in. So for the rest of the fiscal year, so kind of moving toward medium term. We. Still want to have hands-on training while having sufficient social distancing. The word, we're, we have plans, we're implementing to be able to do that. And it's, it's greatly needed. We have a lot of new members, and we need to continue the training. And we need to, to work on working as a team. This is a team sport, and that's important. And, you know, COVID affects that. So. We're, we're working on ways to do that. We have some, some innovations, and some of them may even end up being better than what we were doing before. One of the enhancements that we've been working on is for gear cleaning. We've haven't ever had. Anything close to compliant gear cleaning capabilities. This is for all kinds of health and safety issues, not just COVID, cancer as well. So we've gotten a number of grants from the state. We plan to continue the project. And in order to use the state grants, we need to finish this up this fiscal year. So we will be doing that. We need to resume a lot of our mentorship and one-on-one training. And again, we'll have to figure out how to do that using precautions so that we don't. Get people sick. One of the things in terms of medium term, we've haven't, we've tried to make sure we have enough PPE for what we need right now. And even if we get busy now, what we need, we haven't been really trying to stockpile, because in some ways, that's not particularly ethical when other people really need it. This summer, we will be trying to stockpile. And the goal, our goal will be to have two years of what we would normally use for PPE. If, you know, pandemic comes back in the fall, or we have a different type of pandemic, we may use it all up more quickly than that. But if we have two years on hand, that should be, that should be able to handle us for, for anything that comes down the road. We have financially, I know there will be concerns about our expenses this year, but we've, we already pared down all of our discretionary expenses because we're paying for, for the training and onboarding all these new members. So. It would be very difficult to, to reduce without affecting safety coverage or, or losing our on-call model. So in any case, but for the long term, for next fiscal year, which is all considered long-term here. We. Will be continuing to figure out changes. We expect that our training will not go back to the way it was. For 12 months, 18 months. So we'll evaluate what's working well and, and come up with other ways to do training. Our department has really done a lot to build a more sustainable workforce. We've done this in the past year, and, and even leading up to that. So one of the things that we will be concerned about is that we not lose that momentum in an era of cost cutting. So, you know, eating your seed corn isn't necessarily. The, the best approach here. But. We're going to be making proposals to the Finance Committee to reduce the budget. And the town will have to consider the trade-offs. So operating budget, you know, if we, if we reduce some of our. Incentives and things, that may mean that we have periods of no, with lack of coverage. But it's a decision the town can make. And capital budget, you know, when things are past the useful life, if you don't, you can choose to push it off, but it means that if they do break, it needs to be emergency funding. So they're just, you know, they're, they're things that the town will have to decide in terms of what their priorities are. So these are just kind of the highlights, just kind of a glossing without a lot of details. But kind of as, as an emergency response organization, what we do is plan for emergencies. And we've been doing that. We're going to try to continue to provide kind of a very robust service to the town that can handle providing services even in the face of pandemics and. Weather events and the rest of it. So that's, that's where the fire department is, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, Chief. Okay, so I see that Linda has joined us. And Linda, I understand that. Todd Thorson will be briefing the goals for the Board of Health tonight. But if you would just give us a brief update on the COVID numbers and. For the, the public, and then we'll go into Todd's. Briefing.
Sure. Um, so we got, we acquired two new confirmed cases between yesterday and today. So that puts our total at nine confirmed, five people that have fully recovered. And again, we were also counting one probable, but the state doesn't count that. So we're staying with the state numbers for confirmed cases. And I would like to remind residents that if you are to get a call from the contact tracing team, please answer it, because that's a very important part in containing this infection. And the, the caller ID will actually say mask COVID team. And if you have any questions about answering the call or responding to it, just please let me know. And I'll make sure that it's, you know, legitimate. So that's very important for residents to keep in mind.
Thank you very much. Todd?
Okay. So in the short term, I know Linda didn't mention that we issued a permit for Clark Farm this, this week. And so we have protocols in place, and it's online ordering by credit card, and then curbside pickup from two to five. There's a good plan in place for workers and public on that. So we're trying to get pieces of the, you know, town opened for business, you know, operating safely. And obviously, things like farmers markets are prioritized by the government as essential services. So there really was no reason, given, you know, other supermarkets and things in place, that we would reject this type of request. So looking at Town Hall and trying to, you know, work for getting business to execute things like, you know, septic plants, soil testing, permit applications, I think that the things I'll say tonight are relevant, certainly for many other boards that are operating inside Town Hall. So kind of on the, the shortest term actions through the end of May. We're really working on trying to emphasize remote work until we can get better guidance through the, through the governor with agents and assistants. We're working, you know, through phone calls and emails and conference calls. And, you know, and working as much as we can through, you know, Zoom or any telephone conversations. So we're going to begin limited staffing in the office to deal with the backlog of the permits, land use, food service applications, and other general inquiries that require filing research. And for, you know, for safety on that, you know, going into, into town, we certainly want to make sure that even with other people in there from other departments that will have one person at a time, and coordinating with other departments for reducing people in the areas of using, you know, common things like copiers and restrooms and kitchens so that we have maintained social distancing. We're working on putting sanitation protocols in place for, you know, essentially kind of beginning of day sanitizing, you know, when, when work is done. And of course, you know, masks are in place for, for general protocols. There's no, no public access during the month of May. And we're trying to emphasize any type of interaction we do have is by phone or email. And so that we try to, you know, answer the questions and try to minimize staffing work inside the office in general. So the goal is to have somebody from the Board of Health in for a couple hours, at least three times a week. So we have, you know, if people need to actually do things that are office-based, we can do them. But we're also balancing that. If people don't need to be in the office, then, you know, they can, if they can work from home or remotely, then that would be encouraged. Engineering inspections, we're starting to commence those. And then we got to make arrangements electronically to sign agreements and verify plans of record before inspections. We certainly don't want to go out and do inspections when, you know, all the paperwork and, you know, documentation is not in place. And of course, we'll reevaluate during May, you know, if there's, if things are updated by, by the governor, they change. And the short-term actions, you know, through June 30th, I mean, it's tougher to have long-term guidance, you know, I wish we had plans that went out, you know, towards the end of the year, but it's really quite dynamic at this point. And we're going to continue just having one person in the office at a time. If we do have public access, like we're thinking about you, a month of June would be, if you know, things for Title V inspections, realtors, building or engineer, it'll be by appointment only. So people just don't drop in to the, to the Town Hall. And of course, putting, you know, protocols like masks for visitors as well. And we'll have, you know, the points be coordinated so that, you know, the proper person will be there to, to accommodate. So application and plans, we're really trying to push things PDF and documentation electronically so that these things can be reviewed, so that they're not reviewed in real time, once the person gets to the office. And that'll make it more efficient, so that we minimize contact with the public at large. And, and finally, I just want to mention that if people need to consult with a health agent, the initial meeting can be by Zoom, and that'll help, you know, just plan logistics for, you know, any future interactions. And that's what I have.
Thank you very much. I'm going to move on to COA, Angela.
Good evening. The Council on Aging has been trying to turn our normal programs into online as much as possible. And we have all of our exercise classes online, our French group, our book group, our poetry group, book group and poetry group are at the library, and they play the major role of, of coordinating them. We're doing remote Reiki, we're doing two coffees instead of in-person on Zoom. We continue to answer questions on Medicare. We're still delivering medical equipment. We are, put a great deal of focus on our weekly emails with what's going on and information, not only about what's happening within the town, but also some fun things, which we've gotten information from almost everybody here. And we'd like to thank everybody for sharing their fun links. We are doing a few non-emergency critical transportation to doctor's appointments. We're continuing Meals on Wheels. Our social worker is continuing to work with challenging clients. The office staff is all working off-site. We do go in at. Different times to do what we need to do. We are keeping up our contractor list in our resource guide. And we're also continuing with our normal questions. I mean, today, somebody came in with a social security issue. Somebody else was looking for AIDS for a parent. So the things that we normally get are still coming in. For the midterm, we're looking at what can we do for the summer for programs. We're trying to, we've got one thing set up so far, which is a small group tour at Clark, Clark Farm in August. And we're trying very hard to think of things that we can do that keep seniors safe, but keep them engaged. We are constantly calling the seniors, and we're trying to work our way through all 1,700 of them, starting with the oldest and going to the youngest. For the fall, we've been working with Martha on our normal fall cultural programs, trying to figure out, will they be on Zoom? Might we be able to have some small groups together? And we've worked very hard with the Board of Health and the fire and the police. And we've been so fully supported by everybody in Town Hall and all the Board of Selectmen that we have nothing but thanks to everyone.
Thank you. Lori Eckler? You're, Lori, you're muted? Oops. There you go.
Okay, so our, I guess our short-term goal was design a program that was. Was a way to support. Anyone, seniors, anyone who is immune compromised, and families that may need extra food support during the state of emergency. So we've set up a program. That allows people to sign up easily and volunteers to sign up easily to support the seniors and those, those others in need of help. We have probably 20-ish people we're supporting, and we have 40 volunteers. As, as part of the program. And our goal has been to match neighbors with neighbors. And build a relationship between those two people so it can be sustained into the future. We've done grocery runs, pharmacy runs, transfer station runs, some just small errands, post office runs. So pretty much anything anyone needs to have done outside of their home and allow them to stay at home and stay safe. I think the challenge, sort of, what I've seen is the midterm, mid-challenge is convincing these people. To continue the support. So people have now started to say, well, do you think it's safe for me to go to the grocery store? So based on the fact that we have relationships with these people now, we're comfortable saying to them, no. And they're comfortable hearing the no. I had a conversation like that today. And it wasn't, it wasn't a hard sell, so that made me feel good. And we want this program to be sustainable into the future, because I think it's going to be a while before we can allow these people to go back to the grocery store. I've explained that I, I think that we're not, we're not on a, you know, things aren't going, you know, rapidly down and improving. I think we need to sustain the program for a while and keep these people home and safe. You know, I don't think we've had any of the seniors who we've been working with. Contract COVID, so that's, that's a really good thing. And they're comfortable. And we've had some great relationships result from this. We had, just this week, we had a senior that ended up, despite coincidence, partnered with. A woman whose sister had been previously tutored by this woman when she was a child. So they were very delighted to be connected back together again. So I, I think that we've done a good job setting it up. We have a great list of volunteers. I think once we're past this pandemic, I think this is a program that could be sustained into the future to continue to support our seniors and others that may need one-off, one-off help going forward. So that's all I have.
Well, and you're delivering masks.
Oh, and we're delivering, yep. We're delivering masks, and I had a couple requests today for gloves. So we were going to buy some reusable gloves for the, some of the seniors to use that they could wash and use again.
Great.
And eventually, we hope to be able to provide library services as well. So once Martha, we figured out a program, we can drop off and pick up library books for the seniors as well.
Thank you, which is an excellent segue to Martha.
Hi there. So yes, Lori and Angela have already touched on a few of the things that I'm going to mention tonight as well. But yeah, so the library staff have been working from home, trying to, you know, keep as many of our services and programs going as possible, as much as we can do with the building closed. We're working on our reopening plans, which we're looking at doing in phases. So in the short term, the soon phase one would be, you know, most likely when the stay-at-home advisory lifts, we're going to start offering curbside pickup services, our first step. So we'll have staff in the building, but the building will still be closed to the public. People will be able to call or go online and request items. Staff will get them ready, and they can either schedule a time for pickup or just call when they're outside. And then we'll be working with Lori as well to have her volunteers offering home delivery service for that. All of the programs will continue to be online. We've got storytimes, book clubs, poetry class, armchair travel. We're even going to do a henna tattoo for teens online at the end of the month, believe it or not, sending out the supplies ahead of time so they can mix up their own. Other things about that stage. Oh, and then when items are returned, we'll be quarantining them for 72 hours before checking them out to the next person to make sure that, that the items are safe before they go out again. So we are definitely mindful. Yeah, when we reopen the library, both that it's, it's a community gathering space where people of all ages really like to come and gather and mingle and stay for hours. So it's a little different than. Like your regular retail environment where people go in, they get what they want, they leave, they're not touching a whole bunch of things while they're there. It's really more of a community center space. In the medium term, we're looking at our plans for when we can reopen the building again. So the building will reopen to the public, but there'll be social distancing measures in place, you know, masks, plexiglass at the counters. We'll look at, you know, whether there are any high-traffic areas where we should make things one-way, like the supermarkets have the arrows on the floors right now. During this period, the programs will still be online, but people will be able to come in in person to browse, to use the computers, and we'll space out the seating in the computers more than they are now, and remove some of the seating to keep people spaced out in the building. And then for the longer term, like Angela mentioned, we're looking at, you know, what programs can we do in person? What can we still offer online? So we're expecting, you know, it'll be quite some time before we can pack 50 people into the Hollis Room for a lecture. But we can perhaps have programs for smaller groups or move them to larger locations, and then also offer online streaming so that there's an online participation option for, you know, either if we don't have space for everyone who's interested, or if there are people who are still staying home because they're in vulnerable groups, we'll have options for that. And, oh, and we do plan to keep offering the curbside pickup service for the, for the medium and longer term as well, at least during some hours each week so that people will have that option. And. Yeah, I think that, that covers what's going on at the library. We really, our staff really misses seeing the patrons and wants to come back. But like I said, we do have to be mindful of the, the community. to come back, but we, but like I said, we do have to be mindful of the, the community center role and make sure that it's safe for everyone.
Well, it's clear that a lot of planning, you, you've done a lot of careful planning and obviously done some considerable thinking about the various steps. Thank you. Uh, schools. Was, I saw Jim there. Yeah.
Good evening. Um, so looking at the, at the short term, which we're looking at immediate operations and planning through June twenty-second, which is our last day of school for this year during the closure, we're focused on some primary goals. Um, key to that, ensuring our students and their families receive the social emotional support necessary to manage the school closure and the pandemic as best as possible. We're continuing the implementation of remote learning and we're utilizing both synchronous and asynchronous instruction to keep students connected. And we're moving forward with the curriculum focused on the power standards as identified by the commissioner. Um, and we continue to assess those remote learning strategies and modify them as needed to support families. Um, we're also in the process of preparing to get student belongings and distribute them to families. So we closed up school so quickly, we still have all the student material in the building. We have to gather that up in a way that we can do while we practice physical distancing over the next couple of weeks and then come up with a plan to distribute that to families. Then we're also looking to bring faculty in later in May to start the preparation of closing down their rooms in preparation for next year. Um, we're also making plans for preparations to recognize our eighth graders upon their graduation. Um, we're making plans to coordinate activities such as kindergarten screening and step-up day and do that in a remote sort of fashion. Um, we're coordinating the ongoing project work uh that is being done by our custodial and maintenance staff during this closure. And we're preparing for the transition of a new business manager, which is coming at the end of June as Supre is retiring. Um, we're also deeply involved in the uh conducting appropriate budgetary planning for FY twenty-one, which is a, is critical at this time. And then we're in the process of identifying a back-to-school task force to discuss the and plan for possible options and strategies for returning to school in the fall. And planning for the opening of our traditional summer school program, which is designed to support students with identified services. Um, and I'll elaborate on that as we get into our intermediate plans. We also have a plan, we're working on for an enhanced summer school program, which would be designed to not only meet the, the needs of students with those services identified, but also other students who may benefit from having some instruction over the summer, possibly students on IP, students with TR2 support. And then in our intermediate plans, we're also looking at if we are not allowed to come back physically to school, how will we provide services to those students who do require specialized services during the summer? So those are our short and long-term plans, short and intermediate plans. Our long-term plan is really to work with the, the back-to-school task force to identify best strategies to return to school if we allow to open in the fall or if we're not allowed to open in the fall, especially if we need to, if we are open and we have to continue to practice physical distancing, which you can imagine is going to be a challenge for us at the schools. So we're gonna explore possible approaches, which would include partial days, some students come in the morning, some students come in the afternoon, partial weeks, a Monday, Wednesday or Thursday, Tuesday options with a Friday of remote learning, different ways to use our spaces, cafeteria, gymnasium, auditorium. How do we determine how we'll handle passing times and class changes? Then we'll have to develop expectations around student factor use of PPE. And then we'll have to identify possible additional costs associated with reopening under those premises, right? And possible increased transportation costs, possible increased student support costs, cost of additional PPEs and precautions, including portable sinks and sanitizers, and possible additional needs for technology, hardware and software. Um, we're also exploring the utilization of distance learning strategies as an ongoing component of that. So if we only came on Monday, Wednesdays, how would we utilize distance learning on that third-day week? Um, we're also developing a plan to identify strategies and approaches to modify our curriculum to ensure that students who are, have a gap that is growing right now, that we can close those gap and that gap in an appropriate way. And then we're also planning to continue to work closely with our school-based team and the LEPC to ensure continued close communication, community-wide collaboration in compliance with the health recommendations and expectations as put forth by the LEPC. Sorry I spoke so fast, but we know the elevator speeches at the school, it only goes up three floors, so I gotta.
When it works.
Great now, Kate.
Sorry, Christine, I didn't catch what you said.
No, the elevator at the school works great now.
Oh, great. Okay, we're glad to hear that. Um, Tim, would you like to um discuss, you know, the, first of all, town managers and when, when Board of Selectmen discussed their short, mid, and long-term goals, they seem to overlap a great deal with yours, so I, I will let you present.
Okay.
Ours.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Madam Chair, I guess my, my three main areas of concern are around town governance, staffing and scheduling at Town Hall, and also service provision to the public at Town Hall. With respect to, to governance, uh, boards and committees, I honestly don't know when we will return to having real live meetings at Town Hall for boards and committees. I, I, I can't foresee that at the moment, mostly the board using Zoom or other platforms. Even if we could have live meetings, how are we gonna, you know, deal with the social distancing and, and uh, when you can't limit the number of people who can attend a meeting, how do you tell people that they can't attend a meeting? Because there's literally no room for them. I think that's a problem that needs to be, to be worked on. Uh, don't see an immediate solution to that. As far as uh the legislative branch of, of the town, that's town meeting, the moderator is convening a, a working group this week, a town meeting advisory committee to uh advise him on the possibilities for the June twenty-third town meeting, whether an indoor venue using multiple rooms, more likely at the school, or an outdoor venue, which makes sense and what are the logistical challenges surrounding either of those possibilities? I know a number of towns have moved their town meetings to later in June, and I also know that a number of those towns expect to do it again and expect to have a town meeting later in the year and starting in July, going with a one-twelfth month-to-month budget until they can have that town meeting. So even a June twenty-third town meeting isn't a given at this point, but we need to plan for it, but it, it may, it may not come to fruition. Likewise, the LEPC subcommittee of that group, the two chiefs and I met with the town clerk virtually to talk about the town caucus. We think we've got a good plan for that, to have an outdoor nominating caucus on Monday, May eighteenth in the parking lot of the congregational church. And that, that seemed to come together uh pretty well, that the next hurdle, the next big concern is the actual town election scheduled for June thirtieth. Uh, we know that the, the polling place i- is small to begin with and uh, you know, we wonder, you know, social distancing would probably mean fewer voting booths, longer check-in lines, you know, for the June uh, uh, election and whether PPE would be required. That, that's probably the case. I honestly think we ought to be looking at a larger venue for that election. Uh, I, 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 I've often thought it, it's, it's a small polling place to begin with. Under these conditions, I think uh, it, it's gonna be even harder to conduct the election there. And not to mention early voting, which you'll have not only for the town election, but for the state primary in September and for the, the presidential election, you know, leading up to that in November. So there are a number of issues surrounding elections that, that uh, we need to, and we are planning for, but the first hurdle was the caucus and we think that's coming together nicely. As far as Town Hall scheduling, staffing is concerned, the building is closed through May eighteenth to the general public. That doesn't mean that all town business has ceased and track most of the departments. All departments are still working either remotely or uh employees are coming in during the week. Uh, boards are meeting remotely, uh, departments are meeting remotely with, with applicants, uh, developers of projects, uh, to conduct conferences. The department heads meet weekly. Uh, we meet with, with the departments via Zoom. And today we kind of gave them the broad strokes of what a, a reopening or a return to service plan would look like at Town Hall. And uh, obviously, a lot of PPE vapor barriers for transaction counters and also meeting rooms. Uh, I think as was mentioned, perhaps by the Board of Health earlier, we envisioned uh that'll, mo, all meetings really will be by appointment only uh in the beginning. And those meetings will take place with staff and with residents and applicants in conference rooms. There'll be no access to employee work areas for uh the foreseeable future. And we're really trying to come up with a plan that is, is gonna keep, keep people safe and also be functional and efficient. Um, as I, I, uh, I mentioned that the, the, uh, well, whatever the new service model is, you know, we're gonna need to provide uh masks and gloves and sanitizers and all of that uh to, you know, for both the public and for employees. We envision a kind of gatekeeper or a traffic cop, if you will, that would be stationed in the lobby of uh Town Hall to direct uh people to the appropriate areas, because we don't want people to be kind of wandering about and wondering where they should be. We're trying to increase our online presence where we have it. Currently, the, the building department provides online permitting services now. Rec department has for some time, that tax collector takes payments online. Now, we even, the Board of Assessors, I think, will, are gonna be rolling out shortly online property records, which has been a long time coming and will really uh make a difference uh for them. So we're trying to increase uh the online footprint. Uh, we envision kind of a rotating uh schedule with the employees to uh make sure that we've got appropriate distancing and spacing between employees within the same department, also employees in adjacent departments. So that may be a kind of a rotating schedule to, to ensure that uh, we keep the, the proper uh spacing there. Likewise, uh, uh, you know, that uh, we don't, we haven't traditionally done much cross-training, but we think that certainly a number of the, the administrative staff, staff can pinch-hit for other departments. We don't need every administrative assistant in, you know, on any given day, we can kind of divide up the workload in that fashion. So on the, I guess the long and the short of it is that, uh, you know, we, we don't foresee a, a return to the Monday through Friday, uh, all hands on deck, nine-to-three schedule for, you know, some time uh, you know, the future, you know, the, the staffing levels are, are being re-examined at this point. We also see not all departments coming back on the same schedule. You know, I, I certainly think that, well, for instance, council and aging might not be the first one uh up to bat. You know, that, that might is a department that, you know, a very sensitive, serves a sensitive population. That might not be the first department that opens when we, we go to a reopening of Town Hall. We might wanna be more sensitive about how we do that. So there might be a slower roll-up for some departments. Uh, as always, it's, it's a balance between service and, and safety for our employees and for our residents. So we're, we're at the beginning stages of this planning and we're gonna continue working through that. But we wanted the townspeople to know, well, first of all, the Town Hall is open. You can't, you can't get inside, but you can, you can get ahold of any department for any, anything you need, you know. Now through the eighteenth, we'll wait and see what the governor says past the eighteenth, but we envision slowly returning back to a level of service, uh, you know, hopefully by the first of June. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to add for the selectmen, in the short term, um, we extended the um due date um for the payment of um the, the last um property tax from May first to June first, and we um voted to um waive penalties and fees and interest until June thirtieth. As well, we also um voted to uh extend the deadline for applications for um exemptions and deferrals um on taxes. So um, that was something we've done in the short term. In the long term or mid, midterm, I would say, we are going to be looking very carefully at our, our next year's budget. Um, a lot of you have heard about this exercise everybody's doing. Um, trying to show what a five percent reduction in next year's, their um most recently proposed fiscal twenty-one budget would look like. Um, that doesn't mean that there's gonna be a five percent reduction, but we're certainly going to be looking very, very carefully um at the taxes that we're gonna ask our residents to pay because of what we are looking forward to. Um, going to be very hard times for our residents. Um, so and I don't know if there are any other selectmen who wanted to add anything else for our short, medium, and long-term goals. Great. I'm going to circle back to the Chief Fisher. Thank you, Chief. I'm sorry. I probably should have let you finish your thing, but uh, you opened us up and we'll have you, um, you know, see us out at this point. And you need to unmute yourself.
Sorry, I had to hit two unmutes. There you go. Um, so no, thank, thank you very much for, for circling back. So uh, from the police department standpoint, our elevator speech uh, short-term is really, um, I paraphrase as ensuring safe practices, both for, um, for our citizens and for our members. We gotta make sure that we keep enough PPE gear in store. Um, we've got to um, um, ensure that we have very limited access to the building. Right now, we really don't have a, a safe way. So uh, some of our services, um, we're still not able to provide that we have in the past. Um, and that even includes our administrative assistant. It's really tough, but um, you know, she's home most of her hours right now and, and working remotely. So I would say from the short term, again, it's, it's about safe practices um for, for our members and for the public. Um, look at medium term, I, I called it a plan for reduced traffic. Um, so um, we have some, some police officers that still need some, some training. For example, we're looking at a online training platforms and even for continued training um for our police officers because uh, these next few months, I don't, I don't see, all, all the schools are, are getting canceled that we would normally hope to get our officers into. Um, we're working, working with, um, trying to make sure that any purchases or, or things that people come in to the police department for, we might be able to provide online. For example, the transfer station permits. So uh, working on a plan for that in the medium term. Um, and we've always supplied for residents the ability to get rid of unwanted medications and unwanted needles. And it's a really hard thing that we've not been able to provide right now, but uh, we're working on a plan in the medium term um to try to find some way to do that. Um, we're also preparing um some alternate working schedules for our police officers. Um, and we're working on um some cross-training plans to add some additional um, uh, police officers that are cross-trained in dispatch. Um, and we're looking at also potentially increasing the part-time uh police officer staffing levels at the police department. Um, and for long-term things, I'll have to go back to my term that I opened tonight with, and that's the new normal. What's the new normal of policing um in the police station and police behavior look like in Carlisle so that we can ensure that uh, that our, our Carlisle residents are safe and ensure that our police officers are safe? So that's um increasing kind of maybe individualizing equipment or some stuff that we had shared. We may not be able to share, whether it's um computer hardware, software, um, right down to hard things like patrol rifles and police cars. We may need to add to the amount of um equipment we have to ensure that our police officers and our, our citizens can stay safe. Um, and other pieces of the new normal is just what's, what's it gonna be like to be at the police department for citizens that need to come in from everything they need to do, from fingerprints to firearms permits, um, to, you know, child exchanges uh for families that use us as a spot to do child exchanges. We've, we've a lot of functions that we've, we've always been there for, for Carlisle residents and things that we've always supplied to our police officers. So um, once again, I would call the long-term thing, what's the police department look like in the new normal? So that's, that's the elevator speech for the, uh, for the police department uh from the ten-thousand-foot. So that's, that's the elevator speech for the, for the police department from the 10,000-foot level. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Are there any questions from anybody, for any of the members of the LEPC? And that is the questions from the audience. Want to raise, if you want to raise your hand or have any comments? I don't see any. And I, as always, want to thank the LEPC for all the time and energy and creative ideas and not so creative ideas, but heavy, heavy lifting that you all have been doing over the past few weeks, trying to keep the residents in town safe and to keep the services operating as well as they have. I understand we're doing actually better than Concord, who have, doing no meetings at all. I think their FinCom hasn't met since late January and ours has been many times. So we're doing something right in our, as our Board of Health has been showing, our rate is lower than the comparable towns our size. So thank you again, everybody. And with that, I think we can close the LEPC update information center session and move on with our agenda.
Thank you.
Jim, did you want to be recognized or you're just saying goodbye?
Just saying goodbye. Thanks.
Thank you. Great. All right. Tim, our next agenda item, an appointment of a full-time police officer? What, you're, Tim, you've got, you're muted. There. Try it again. Nope, still mute.
I should, I should have figured this out in the past month or so, right?
Well.
Some running the meeting technically, right?
Yeah. No.
Actually, regarding the, the appointment, the chief might have something to say about this, but can I ask tonight that we postponed that? We, we've got some work to do regarding process issues, nothing to do with the candidate, per se, but we'd like to put that on a future agenda. I don't know, Chief, if you wanted to add anything to that, but.
Yeah, I'm sorry for, for any inconvenience, but yeah, if you don't mind, we're going to push that off to our future meeting and I'll, I'll ask another time to be on the agenda, if that's fair.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Just let us know when you want to replace on the agenda. Great. 8:30, well, we're way ahead. Town administrators' report.
Okay, just to, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I was just saying, back to you, Jim.
Okay. In, in my report tonight, I think I just made a note that, Kate, you had asked to bring, bring up again the open space and recreation plan, the board's input to that. Just to remind board members of that this evening.
I haven't heard it from anybody, so we're going to have to put it on an agenda soon and, and kind of, you know, I, I assume, the last time I talked to David Friedman, he was recovering from what COVID, I think. I don't know if he's one of the confirmed cases or not, but so I assume he's going to be trying to get back on the saddle and will be starting to pressure us soon, so we, we should be ready. And so if you would all see if you can drag it out and send me your comments, I would appreciate it and we'll see if we can give him something. And if you have no comments, likewise, you know, email me and say, I have no comments, I think it looks good the way it was last time or whatever, so that I know where we stand. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is just, we addressed this earlier, the meeting with the town clerk regarding the caucus that will be held Monday, May 18th at 5:00 PM. Recommending an earlier start time on that, all for the, the insects and the daylight. So there'll be a forthcoming press release from the town clerk, but it looks like Monday, May 18th would be the date for the caucus at the congregational church parking lot. Item number three, attached to my report, you'll find a list of surplus technology equipment that CPS would like to have the board declare a surplus so that they may donate it to a charitable organization. Unless there are questions, actually, I wouldn't be the one to ask about the particular equipments that's listed, but this is an annual request and I'm sure if more detail is, is requested, we, we can obtain that for you, but.
It looks totally reasonable to get rid of that stuff.
Yeah, I looked at the list, there's a lot of pretty old stuff on there and it's, it's probably ready. I would, I would move to declare a surplus, the list of technology equipment presented this evening by the Carlisle School Department for the purpose of allowing CPS to donate it to a charitable organization.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor and we'll do roll, roll call.
Arnold, that.
Usco, the right.
Brian.
Louis, high.
Reed, high.
Very good.
We even have our alphabetical order down now.
Yeah.
Only took a year and change.
All right, and then we have the proposed agenda for the next few meetings. Next week would be more or less a real Board of Selectmen meeting where we have got the dear committee coming in, we'll look at some of the financial articles on the draft warrant in addition to the LEPC update and informational portion of the meeting. We'd have an LEPC update scheduled for the 19th. I understand through the chair that the finance committee would like to meet jointly that evening, so we'd be adding that to the agenda on the 19th. On May 26th, that really is the meeting we need to finalize the town meeting warrant for June 23rd and decide on the number of articles that would go forward at, at that point. And we'd invite the moderator to that meeting. I think at last count, we were down to maybe 15 from an original 27 or 28 articles that the board felt ought to go forward at this town meeting in the interest of voting a town budget and some of the other necessary fiscal items, but we can talk about that at that meeting. And that's, that's all I've got on my report.
Okay, thank you. Any liaison reports? Okay. I, well, I did, I'm not the lead, I don't know, if I'm the, we always have this discussion. But anyway, I was at the FinCom meeting last night and they are going to have their, let's call it hearings on Monday, the, was it the 11th and 12th and Tuesday, the 12th, asking, they've asked all the department heads to come with 5% cut budget and, and present them to those things. So anybody who wants to go to listen to those can, of course, they're starting at four in the evening and they're going from four to seven, I think, is how they, they organized it. Any other liaison reports? None? Questions, comments, concerns? All right, well, I don't think there's anything else on the agenda, let me just check. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Louis, I?
Louis, I.
There we go, and Reed.
I heard Bernie, so that's why I went.
Yeah, that's good. Okay. That's all right. I could see everybody's lips moving and that's fine with me, you know?
And Kate, this is a new record.
It is, it is. There was nobody in the, almost nobody in the audience.
Jeannie was on, I see her, she's still on.
Still there, yep.
I don't know who dispatches, but, and, and Chris.
On an iPad, I don't know who that was.
And Chris, Chris is still with us.
Mary Lynn Bone.
And Mary Lynn.
And some guy named Brian Sarrows.
Yeah.
Bill Rissok.
Who let him in?
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody. Thank you again.